I'd like to call to order the February 5th, 2024 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome, everyone. First up is the approval of the work session agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
A simple proposal, a second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to item 3.1. And this is a discussion of our public participation policy. I think we have had discussions about this in the past, and we have had situations where we've read our public participation policy, and we still have some, some issues in that regard. And it is my understanding that there have been several complaints from the public regarding some of the information that's shared there, as well as some others. So I will turn that discussion over to Evan Lee at this point.
And I'm going to bounce it back to Mr. Cook really quickly. I think, well, let me just say this. I think Mr. Cook and I spoke about this last week. And generally, the, the policy was put in place, I think, a couple of years ago because there wasn't one that existed. And, and it's pretty consistent with similar ones that do happen around the jurisdiction. It's what we call a time, place, and manner restriction. That's where the three minutes comes in, the, the subject matter. So in, in talking with this, Mr. Cook and I wanted to, at least just before we, we get into what the concerns are, just remind everybody what the policy is, and then kind of address some of the issues that we have seen with content in the public comments.
That's true. And the reason it's come up again right now is because there's been some interchange, I think on social media particularly, that has been started by Jeter and Jerry Anderson, that has involved some of our employees who were involved in the case, you know, that they keep talking about. And we hadn't seen that previously, where they were making it personal as to a couple of employees. I think there was some concern here now that, that it's crossed another line. Before, it was just what we'd see in the meetings, you know, the regular meetings, you know, during public comment. But then this came up, you know, that they're, are taking issues and sort of attacks on some of these employees. And I think there was a feeling, as I understood it, that because we weren't really confronting the Andersons in the meetings about crossing the, the line of the, of the policy, that maybe we weren't fully supporting our employees who were directly involved in it. So that's what, that's the issue that has come up recently, is, is trying to deal with that. And I think Evan knows a little bit more about, about the emails. And I think, and Jay White is here, your DHS attorney, he's, he's been involved with this too. And he's been part of our discussions. So I think that's why Jay is here. So certainly, if he has some things he wants to, to say about it, that would be welcome. Now, you know, I say this is, you know, this, we deal with them every, or listen to them, I guess is really all that happens, you know, in every, every regular meeting and have for several years now. And you all have heard some of the things that have occurred, where they, you know, they're not supposed to make ad hominem attacks against employees or, or staff, or leadership, or anyone else. But they still do some of that. And a lot of that's been directed to, to Mike Downs. And so, you know, and they also, you know, talk about, you know, some of their relatives, you know, and give personal information about them, which they, they're not entitled to do. Particularly as to the granddaughter, who, who was the subject of, of an adoption seven or eight years ago. And so they have no legal right to, to talk about her in, in any way. So that, those are the two points in which they, they've crossed the line in my estimation. And as a matter of fact, it was several months ago, when they were really, you know, concentrating on, on, on Mike, that I'd written a memo, a memo that internally about, you know, that, and that maybe we needed to look at doing something about it. So I thought what I might do is just read that memo, so you could hear, because it kind of covers some of the points that, that relate to them. And we've had other people come to the meetings and speak, but I think they're the only ones that consistently cross the line in terms of our policy. And so, under those conditions, it seemed that, that maybe, you know, if you all feel that that's what you want to do, is to, to somehow try to rein this in. And there, we can talk about, you know, what that could look like, maybe in a few minutes. But let me just read this. I think it picks up on all the, the issues that we need to deal with, and particularly deals with their situation, which, as you all know, you can't do anything about, about it anyway. It's something that, that, that was decided in the, in the courts, which are a state function, and not a county function, even though they're called the Cabarrus County Superior District Court. They're not controlled by the county. And the Board of Commissioners has no authority over what happens in, you know, in, in the matters over at the courthouse. All we do is provide the courthouse. Everything else is done by the state. So here's, here's what I had thought might need to be said. Then this is as if it's addressed to Jerry Anderson. You and Jeter have been coming to every regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for about two years to speak at public comment, to have three minutes apiece, to speak to the board, and to be on the local cable TV stream of the meeting. As you know, the Commissioners do not engage in dialogue with anyone who speaks during the public comment section of the meeting. In part because of your personal attacks on Mike Downs, I say this was written at the time that those were frequent. All of the attorneys representing the county, and two of the social workers involved in your daughter's child welfare case, the Board of Commissioners instituted a policy concerning public comment at the meetings, which prohibits ad hominem attacks. An ad hominem attack is an attack against a, talking about a person personally, not about what they've done, you know, publicly, or it's, it's a tackle, tackle on, you know, what they look like, or how they act, something that's aside from their, you know, their duties. Despite that policy, you have continued to make such attacks, particularly on, on Mike. Because the Commissioners do not respond at the meeting to what is stated in public comment, you have gotten away with making statements that you know are not true, and calling on the Commissioners and county staff to take action that you know they cannot take. County, or child welfare cases are handled by the state court system, and every decision is made by state court judges. Neither the Commissioners nor county staff can change those decisions. So your repeated appearances at the VOC meetings will not change any result because nothing can be done about it by the board, by the staff, even though you give the impression in your presentation that that can occur. As you know, that case is over eight years old, and was closed with an adoption through the courts of your granddaughter. The results of the child welfare case and the adoption were reviewed by the state of North Carolina, which found no irregularities. You are also aware that the state laws do not allow discussion of the particulars of child welfare cases in public. With this additional reason, the board and staff cannot discuss your daughter's case. Those laws are to protect your daughter's privacy and your granddaughter's privacy. I don't guess you have given much thought to the fact that you and Jeter violate their privacy each month, that you come to the VOC meeting and talk about those matters. You don't have a right to do that. In the last meeting, Jeter accused Mike Downs of, of changing a diagnosis or status in a child welfare case. Mike Downs says, I can't get involved in the handling of child welfare cases, and would have no authority to take such an action, let alone have the training and experience needed to do it. In, in that same meeting, Jeter again brought up that Mike had locked you out of his office, when in fact, your meetings with him had been in Conference Room A, right outside of these chambers, which never has had a lock on the door. You can keep coming to the VOC meetings and speaking during public comment. However, few further violations of, of the, of the public comment policy will cause your right to speak to be curtailed at, at the time that it happens. Also, it is our understanding that you have been contacting DHS and tying up staff time concerning these closed matters. You certainly have the right to contact them concerning any new matter, but not these old matters. Otherwise, the county may have to take some steps to prevent that from continuing. That was the other issue that had come up right at that time, was that they apparently were calling up to DHS regularly, and asking about these, these same matters, and having staff have to, to answer questions, you know, which, some of which they couldn't answer anyway. But, but it was taking up some, some valuable staff time they could spend on something else. So, so that was what I had put together at that time. And it hints at, you know, curtailing their right to speak. We've never done that in the county that I'm aware of to anyone. We've never had to that I'm aware of. And, you know, as you may know, the city of Concord has done some of that. They've, I think, banned some people from coming to some of the city council meetings. And I, I can't say I know too much about that, by what they did. It seemed to me that a permanent ban on anyone, it had, you know, it's gone into social media, and is mentioning specific employees. And one of the emails, or, excuse me, one of the posts, I guess it was, they were mentioning this employee's son, and saying things about them, and that she shouldn't have custody of him, because she's such a supposedly bad person, or whatever. So, so that's kind of what we're dealing with. And I say it's kind of crossed yet another line, outside of our meetings. And we felt that we needed to bring it to your attention, and see if you have some thoughts about what you'd like to do. Evan, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, not really. I'll let the Commissioner speak. And then I, I would think the one thing I will say is, is, you know, in addition to the Andersons, this, this goes across any kind of repeat speakers we have. And we have these rules of conduct. And Commissioner Morris, as the chair, has the authority to, to curtail those comments. But I think that one of the issues we've discovered is, is not everybody is, is a lawyer. And so there, there is a fine line in, in this, because it is something that is statutorily required. And it is a public forum. And so one of the things is, we are proposing kind of doing more of a warning, and, and potentially allowing, one of the solutions we think might work is allowing you, as a board, to lean on Attorney Cook and I, and say, in a meeting, what, what are those lines? And if something crosses the line, you know, potentially giving some sort of notice to the chair to then say, hey, this, we feel like this has crossed the line, interrupt that speaker, and then we can have that discussion in an open forum.
You may also want to hear from Jay, if he had something he wanted to say. I don't know if he does.
Not, unless somebody has any specific questions, but no.
It's a, it's a fine line that we walk, because the last thing we ever want to do is take away somebody's freedom of speech. Personally, I don't have a problem with them coming up there and calling us names all day long. Go ahead. The, the problem I had, and I'll use you specifically, that crossed the line, is when they brought up your cane. And, and you happened to use that. We were raised that if you don't say anything, then you condone it. However, at the same time, we don't have the authority to do it, whereas it's going to fall on the chairman. I'm not in favor of banning somebody permanently, but I am absolutely in favor of addressing them specifically. And this is a public meeting. They're going to see it. I promise, they're going to see it if, if, if you pay attention. I think they need to be addressed upfront at our next, our regular session, because they're going to sign up to speak. And don't beat around the bush. Lay it out right in front of them. If you name names, if you make any insults, you're, you're going to be cut off, and the police are going to escort you out. At the same time, they're entitled to come and speak about whatever they want. Anybody is. And I just, I don't want to squash that, but I have no problem with Chairman Morris stepping in and cutting them off when, when they cross that line. Your example, they, the young lady that saved a life that we talked about last month, she, she was degraded by them right after that presentation. And to me, that crosses a line. She had nothing to do with their case. That's, it's just reaching out and lashing at people. So I, I don't want to ban them, but I would like to see us step in at the next meeting and address them specifically, and tell them that if, if this does happen again, including tonight, then you're going to be escorted out. That's how I feel about it.
Yeah, I, I feel like the, you know, we shouldn't get in the business of deciding who can or cannot come to our meeting to speak. You know, we, we do sit through that every month, listen to each of them have their three minutes. I'm not going to say that I enjoy, you know, everything that they have to say, or that I agree with any of it. And I don't agree with personal attacks, you know, on you, Rich. That is crossing the line, and, and I think that's inappropriate. You know, this memo that you had just read to us, I feel like that would further aggravate the situation if they were to receive that in the mail. You know, I've read through this participation policy, and I feel like there's language in this policy already that gives, that's the reason we have a chairman, that gives our chairman the authority. You know, whoever discusses here not talking about, you know, can't talk about minors, and, you know, minors information, and things that sort. You know, I feel like our policy pretty well covers the things. We just, it's just up to our chairman to, to enforce that. And also, the other thing I was going to mention, I wrote here, you know, if, if you were to send that memo, or we were to change this, you know, public participation policy, you know, that, that is a whole separate issue than them on social media going after our employees. It seems like there would already be something there that could be enforced on that. You know, changing this is not going to affect them going on social media, making, did you say it was threats, or was it to their employees?
It was comments about their, their children, and basically fitness to be a parent. And that's the thing, I will say, that we do have a social media policy. It is currently just organically, Jonathan Weaver and the Communications Department were working on kind of strengthening, I don't want to say strengthening that and limiting speech, but updating it with the times, because we, we do use it a lot. If you've been on our page recently, you know, you've seen everything from interviews with employees and, and things like that. So, and that is, I don't, it is easier to control and to monitor. So I do agree that it probably would not affect that, and it wouldn't really affect what we're already able to do on that. And then Facebook does have its own, you know, internal things it does. So I think the social media piece is, I don't want to say easy, but it is easier than the public participation comment. And I will say, I, I am not advocating we, we change the public participation comment. I'm really just trying to see if there are questions about it, and any clarification that I can provide as attorney. I think you all have articulated exactly what we've seen the issue as being. There's a difference between criticizing public officials, which we all are used to, and is a legal right, and we should all have to do. And that's kind of the bedrock of our democracy, versus character assassination, character attacks. Then you have, you know, the, the whole piece of unprotected speech, and things like defamation, you know, accusing somebody of, of a crime, or accusing them of having a sexually transmitted disease or affair. And that, that's the type of thing that crosses the line. So that's where, if there is any gap, I think what the purpose, or at least the purpose of putting, asking the, the chair to put this on the agenda was, if there's any clarification that is needed from, from us as legal counsel, we wanted to make sure that we could provide it. Because I agree with your statement, Commissioner Rees-Meier, that the policy is, is very narrowly written. And, and we've attempted to be permissible with speech, but also have the right restrictions that are legally required. So it is a really fine line. But I just want to make sure there are not issues that it's maybe, okay, well, we're not sure when we can step in. And, and so that's one of the reasons why we wanted to have this discussion. Because I, I think eventually, one day, those two individuals will go away. But that doesn't mean that we won't have some other person who comes up and wants to talk about something. And, and there's always been kind of those people who use public comment sessions to get on local access TV, for whatever reason they want to do. I mean, that was the case in, in the prior jurisdiction I worked. It was about, it was about the dog shelter. And my understanding is, they still come and fuss about the dog shelter 10, 15 years after they started coming. So it's, it's like you, and Commissioner Warman said, it's, it's, it's part of the, the job, and it's part of signing up to be an elected official. And to a certain extent, for the people around this table, it probably comes with our job as well. So that's a long-winded way of me saying, I don't think we need to change anything. I just am genuinely curious if there's anything we could do better.
Has, has anyone sat down with these guys and talked to them about their situation? I know they accuse you of locking the door on them, and things of that nature. I mean, and this is all, this has been going on for years. So I mean, it's not...
I've spent several hours over a couple of years ago with them. And in fact, had our legal folks look at the process, and the Department of Human Services at the state level as well, the review. And then when we came back to give them the response of our research, that's when it all went off.
Okay. But that was the end of it. Whenever you spoke to them, all the investigations was finished, and it wasn't still an ongoing issue or anything of that nature? Okay.
No. And I, and they, I have never, never denied them the ability to come talk to me.
Evan has talked with them. David Goldberg, when he was here, had talked with them. And I've talked with him, aside from all of that, too. And this memo was not to be sent to the Andersons. I had kind of set it up as something that the chairman might read at the beginning of a meeting. That's what it was intended for. But, you know, I say it was, that's never been done. And so that was the purpose for that. And, you know, I really don't care what they say about me personally. My real, you know, doesn't matter. So I'm kind of like everyone else up here. You know, you, you have to have kind of a thick skin, if you're going to be involved with, you know, you know, handling the public's business. And so, you know, I, that wasn't what prompted this. It, it was just where, if you look at the policy, that they were consistently crossing the line, sometimes going pretty far across it. It just seemed like maybe it was time to sort of back, back it off a little bit. So, and again, like Evan said, I think the policy we have is a very good policy. It was drawn up, you know, and it, it's in accordance with the law. And I think that it gives a lot of latitude, which it should, you know, to the public. And so I'm not suggesting that we change the policy. I think what we, we just wanted to, you know, mention that this is all still occurring. And like I say, it keeps coming up again and again, where there's, you know, and it morphs a little bit over time. And we just want to, you know, bring it to the Commissioners, to get your input on it.
The comments that I wanted to make, and I appreciate what you said, Rich, because I feel the same way. We get rocks stowed at us pretty much, pretty regularly, no matter how good you do. But I, I learned, I've been doing this now since the year 2000. So this is my 23rd year doing this. And I figure if you make 50% of the people happy, you've done good. Because that's, that's about the best you can do. But relating to what we're talking about, the public speaking ordinance, I have no problem with it like it is. I think it's, it's very well-written. It's very stringent. But the question that I have, though, is primarily for the legal. Jay, with you being here, and I'm glad you're here, it would seem to me like that, because this is the only case that we've had, public speaking, where people come and talk about their children that were adopted, a closed case, and all of that. But from the legal standpoint, it would seem to me like that the judges that handle that case would issue a gag order, or something of that nature. And if they broke that, then they would be a cease and desist order, to prevent people from going out and talking about things that nobody can do anything about, because it's closed. It was a closed case, in this particular case. There's nothing, like you said, with nothing we can do, nothing staff can do. But they can keep going out there. But if they had a court-ordered gag order, I'm saying, well, you can't go out and discuss this, if that's legal. See, I don't know. That's where you legal guys come in. Maybe, Jay, you might could comment on that. I, I don't know. Because you handle child welfare cases, and so I don't know if that's attainable or not.
Commissioner Schu, the state, the quest, quest case that you're specifically talking about has been closed, I think, for seven or eight years. And once the case is closed, the court has no longer jurisdiction over it. A terminational parental rights was done, and that is the last the court has any case. It's not a pending case. So that, when you're talking about a gag order, that can only be in a case that is before the court, and is still active within the court system. And this is not, and has not been, as I believe, for about eight years now.
Okay. Thank you, Jay.
I appreciate your comments.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I can speak to this from, from the perspective as serving as chairman. And as was stated earlier and is stated in our policy, that is one of the duties and responsibilities of the chairman is to conduct the meeting and to maintain order. And, and the way that I choose to do that is to follow the rules and policies that have been approved by this board. I think where a little discomfort comes in on my part is being respectful of people's rights. And as we've heard repeated several times in this discussion, people do have a right to come and be heard. They do have a right to express themselves as they feel appropriate, which may not always agree with what we think is appropriate. So determining when they step over that line between what just might be displeasing to me, but what really does violate the policy, as we've discussed today, is, is a very fine line and it's hard to determine in some cases. I think in the case of the, of our last regular meeting, I, I read a condensed version of the policy before we began public comments because they had been, there had been several incidents where, where folks had crossed over the line, I felt like. And so that was kinda, I felt like a friendly reminder. You've heard the rules before, but we wanna refresh your memory. And of course, one of the, one of the big parts of, of, of this, this rule is you may not state the name of a minor without permission from their parents. And within seconds of me saying that, they proceeded to do just exactly that. To, to state the name that they have stated many times before. You know, my personal concern for that would be that that might cause some discomfort or problem for this child who's been adopted for seven years. And, and so I, I think a statement that I heard earlier was if we sit back and allow this to happen, then we're basically endorsing it. You know, we're condoning that type of behavior. And I, I hope that that's not what any of us want, but I would like to feel comfortable that when, when someone does step over that line and I say, stop, you need to stop speaking, which I, I don't think would actually stop them, that, that I would have the support of the rest of the board members. Now, if there, if there are board members that don't feel comfortable with that, then, then I'd like to hear that as well, as part of this discussion, to make sure that we're kinda all on the same page. I know that there, there were some comments that were made after our last regular meeting about political speeches, speeches that didn't relate to the business of the board, just an opportunity for a, a public appearance. And we've really never had a conversation about that. And I, I don't think that that's really covered in, in our rules of procedure. So, you know, it would be nice to hear what the other board members have to say about that. I heard from a couple last time, but I think for me, the most important thing is consistency, to make sure that everyone is treated the same way, that it doesn't have anything to do with the, the topic. Yeah, the, our, our rules do say speakers may not use comment periods for commercial advertisements, solicitations, or supporting or opposing a candidate for public office. So, so that one, that one is, is, is pretty much covered. So I thought, I thought it would be beneficial for the entire board to, to kinda have this open discussion, see where we are on it, to give me a good sense of, because I, I feel, I feel.
We really can't get it to go on.
Well, I'm sure that some technical guru will come out here and.
Two songs, I do.
Thank you. And, and I sorta lost my train of thought where, where I was talking there. But I, I don't ha, I don't have a problem, you know, if, if the board is supportive of, of stepping out and, and taking action. And then if, if somebody determines that's incorrect, then, then that's fine. We'll, we'll apologize for it and do better next time. But I would rather err on the side of protecting individuals, both our employees that, that are referenced in the Department of Human Services, as well as our employees that, that are sitting at that desk when those comments are made. And I do agree with, I, I, I find the comments about other people, particularly if they're talking about someone's appearance or physical condition or whatever the case may be, to be extremely inappropriate. And I've, it pains me for, for myself and for this board to sit by quietly, silently, and to allow that to happen. But that's our policy, is to, to, to give everyone their time and to be, and to be quiet. But, you know, personally, the number of times that I have read that policy and not gotten, you know, for the most part, been ignored. Sometimes it'll improve for a meeting or so, and then it'll go back the other direction. I, I feel like there needs to be some consequence to not following the policy, whether that would be a 60-day suspension of privileges to speak in public comment, 90 days, we, we can't say 30 days, cause we only meet once every 30 days for, for public comment. But, you know, I'd, I'd, I'd love to hear what the rest of you have to think. Did you have something, Commissioner?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, the policy is, is firm. I think that if we just follow the policy and give you the authority to, to, to do what needs to be done, it just takes care of itself. One question, do you have the ability to turn their, their mic off?
Somebody asked me that question the other day and I didn't know the answer of it. I've been doing it for 10 years and I've never had an occasion to.
So that's what, yeah, the school system, that's what happened. We, they have the ability to, to do it.
She just said there's a button that turns everybody off.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's been done before at the school level anyway.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I don't mind doing that.
Chairman Morris, what I would say is when you've got, it doesn't necessarily have to be the Andersons, anybody that is breaching the public speaking ordinance that we have set up, that would just give you another opportunity to use that gavel and call them out of order. And then the question is, if they continue doing that, what would we, you do at that point? Would you ask the deputies to take them out and for contempt of the ordinance? Or would they just pick up where they left off?
Yeah, I think, I think that if they violate the policy and we ask them to stop and they fail to stop, then I think we would ask the security officers in the chambers to, to please remove them from the chamber. I have mentioned that previously for people that ignored the time limit portion of, of the rules. We've never had to do it, but that, that tool is available to us. And, yeah, have had, have had those conversations with, with our law enforcement people and they say that that is appropriate.
So I, I do not agree with political speeches being made at public comment. If we had every candidate come before our meeting and take three minutes, we would be there for probably an extra hour or longer. So, you know, I know it happened at the last meeting and hopefully it was just a one-off deal, cause obviously we don't want that to, to turn into, like I said, a constant, you know, 25 candidates come in and wanna talk about their campaign. So, so I don't agree with that. But, you know, the memo as well, you know, I mean, I kinda feel like we're on a little bit of a slippery slope. You know, if you read this memo to them, or Rich had mentioned that it was not designed to send to them, but I guess to read to them, you know, if you do this, this time, it could be sent to president where you're gonna have to, a president where you're gonna have to draft one of these multiple times, you know. You know, I think the rules are in place, you're the chairman of the board and, you know, whenever minors, whenever minor, minors, their names are being put out there, some of that violation of the policy, then, you know, with this document, you have the authority to, to, to enforce the rules. I mean, that's, that's what it's for. So, you know, hopefully this doesn't turn into a bigger issue. You know, that's, that's what I mentioned about the memo and things of that. You know, we, we start doing that for one, then it's gonna have to, you know, continue and we, you know, we've got more important things to worry about than trying to, to, you know, read memos to rebut what folks are saying at public comment.
Well, and I appreciate those comments and, and you are correct and I hadn't really analyzed it, but if we allowed every person that was going to be on the ballot in the March 5th primary to come up and make a campaign speech, that would be a significant amount of time. And I think, I guess the tricky part of it is, as I said earlier, being consistent with everyone. The, the speech that we experienced last time, you know, I, I think all the way through, you know, I know, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm thinking, okay, where's this going? You know, thinking that there was a, an issue that was going to be presented and there never was. And I think it was only at that point that, that my conclusion was, well, that was just a political campaign speech. So sometime we might get it wrong. Sometimes I might get it wrong. But.
Well, in, in that instance last month, I don't know if that's a situation where you need to just shut that one down immediately. If this becomes a big issue.
Right.
You know, like, like I mentioned, if, you know, if every, where you said, if everybody on the ballot comes out, we're gonna have, we're gonna have an issue then.
Right.
I agree with Commissioner Maceburn. I did, I actually did voice that to you last meeting.
Right.
That I, I don't find that appropriate. But you had asked, you asked a question and I don't think any of us have answered it yet, so I will. You, you were looking for support. You know, I voted for you as chair because I trust you to do the job, so if you have to shut it down, I, I will back that.
Well, thank you. And, and let me say that I think for any one commissioner, if, if they're, if we're headed in a direction with the public comment that you feel like, that action should be taken and I'm not doing it, I think it's perfectly fine for you to key your mic and, and interrupt the speaker and say, excuse me, and then, then address your comment to the chairman and, and, and then I can take action on it. I think that would be the proper procedure. So that would not be offensive to me. I mean, I think we're all in this together and so each person's thoughts on that is important. And, and so feel free to do that at, at any time. And, yeah, I, I think that as far as the memo goes, I think we've received the benefit from that by addressing the issues that we're concerned about. I suspect that the speakers probably will hear the memo prior to our regular meeting. There's no particular reason to read it to them. I guess the, the question in my mind is, we've read the policy multiple times. I read it last time. They did not obey the policy. If it comes back this month and they disobey the policy again, so is, at that point, do we feel comfortable in saying, because you have repeatedly ignored the policy, then, then your privileges for three minutes during public comments are suspended for 60 days? Or do you want that to be the third strike? Or just, and we don't have to make a definite decision on that. I just kinda wanted to see how people felt about it.
I think there's already been plenty of strikes. With, with this specific example, I wouldn't have a problem with the 60-day. This has been going on for years. So I, I would say there's been way more than three strikes already. So I, I'm comfortable in this one, if it, if it's violated again, you know, 60-day and then see what happens. Hopefully they get it and then they come back and they have other issues they can speak on.
Right.
Do we need to put this in the policy?
I don't necessarily think so.
I don't think so. No, I don't think so. I, I think it's up to the board to determine how they wanna address each situation, whether it's simply a warning and cutting them off for the remainder of the evening, whether it's, because also it's gonna depend on the speaker's response. Some speakers just being cut off and, and losing that platform may be enough to deflate them. Some may be agitated and we may have to call in law enforcement. Then there, there's other issues. It could be a trespass issue and that kinda thing. But I, I think it, less rigidity is better.
Anything else on this topic that you feel like we need to address before moving on? This gives me some, something to work with and, and some assistance and, you know, I think it's just, it's all about being respectful and respecting everyone's rights. And that includes the people around, around this table as well as citizens. I think the general public probably would like to hear an explanation of what it is they've been hearing about for two years. And we have never done that because of, of legal requirements that, that certain privileged information not be disclosed. And, and most of the privileged information that I'm aware of has come from them. It hasn't come from being a commissioner at all. But, you know, I have had a number of members of the public to say, I don't understand what they're talking about. So I, I think we've, and, and of course, our attorneys have said, we should not discuss those matters at all. And I think that's why they've kinda gone unrestricted so long. So if everybody is good with that discussion, we will move on to item 3.2. And we are happy to have Liz Fitzgerald from the Cabarrus Arts Council to talk about the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study. Welcome.
It's on. Wonderful, thank you. Getting this set up. Thank you, Lauren. Good afternoon. I'm Liz Fitzgerald. I'm the executive director of the Cabarrus Arts Council and I am really pleased to have this time with you this afternoon to share with you the results of a year-long study that we participated in. The Arts and Economic Prosperity Study is an economic and social impact study of the nonprofits arts and culture sector. Our, the Cabarrus Arts Council led the local surveying that is part of Americans for the Arts National Study. So there were 373 communities nationwide that participated in this and we were one. And so I'm presenting the results specifically to our county. Locally, we had 20 arts and culture organizations that participated in this. and culture organizations that participated in this study through reporting on their own budgets and in collecting audience intercept surveys at a variety of events, workshops, and festivals that we had in our county. Um, in all, 823 local audience members participated in the study while they were at, at those activities. Um, and they shared both about their spending related to coming to the event, um, and their impressions of the value of cultural activities in our community. In Cabarrus County, the sector generated $7.6 million in economic activity during 2022. 2.1 million of that was in spending by arts and culture organizations ourselves, um, and an additional 5.5 million in event-related expenditures by their audiences. The, that economic activity supported 111 jobs, it provided $3.2 million in personal income to residents, and generated nearly $1 million in tax revenue for local, state, and federal Nonprofit arts and culture organizations are businesses. We employ people locally, we purchase supplies and services from nearby businesses, and engage in the marketing and promotion of Cabarrus and our region. Our very active doing business, creating, presenting, exhibiting, and engaging our communities has a positive economic impact in addition to improving our community well-being. In Cabarrus County, nonprofit arts and culture organizations spent an estimated $2.1 million, which supported 36 jobs and generated over $413,000 in local, state, and federal government revenue. Beyond our own impact as organizations, arts and culture drives commerce to local businesses. When people attend a cultural event, they often make an outing of it. Dining at a restaurant, paying for transportation, enjoying dessert or drinks after the show, and returning home to pay for childcare. Um, overall, in Cabarrus County, attendees spend $27.18 per event they attend beyond anything that they're spending with the arts and culture organization. This is spending that happens around their experience of coming to our events. These dollars represent vital income for local merchants and a value add with which few industries can compete. Arts and culture strengthens the visitor economy. In Cabarrus County, 35% of attendees are non-local visitors who traveled from outside Cabarrus County and who spend their money here. 82% of non-local attendees reported that the primary purpose of their visit was specifically to attend the performance, event, exhibit, venue, or facility where they were We also know that a vibrant arts and culture community keeps local residents and their discretionary dollars here in our community. When attendees were asked what they would have done if the event they were surveyed at had not been available, 60.4% of attendees who live in Cabarrus County said they would have traveled to a different community to attend a similar activity. We know that all too well here in our county, that there are many options really close by, um, for folks to go to. Um, so it is important to us to make sure that we continue to offer robust entertainment and educational arts offerings near where families live. And part of the commitment that the Arts Council has made over the last couple of years is to really expand our own offerings close to where people live. Um, in addition to the work that is, um, being provided by, uh, so far this year, we've supported over 22 other local organizations in the work that they're doing through our grant-making process. Um, that's one of the gifts that we get to, um, give to our community as your designated county partner in receiving those grassroots funds. Um, we match that with other local support, um, to really extend support to, um, many of the organizations that serve our community. Um, 22 already this year. I've got another batch of grant applications, um, that are being reviewed by a panel tomorrow. So, um, we are really making an impact with many organizations and communities here. Arts and culture organizations are also deeply valued here in addition to providing value. Um, our residents said that of the events they attended, um, they contribute to their sense of community pride in Cabarrus County. 87% of arts and culture attendees agree that the activity where they were survey, surveyed is inspiring a sense of pride in this neighborhood or community. Over 80% said they would feel a great sense of loss if this activity or venue were no longer available. And over 80% agree that the venue or facility where they were surveyed is an important pillar within their community. Cabarrus County has been an advocate and source of support for arts and culture organizations and public art here, and this study underscores both the return on this investment and the opportunity we should have should the commission deepen investments in the Arts Council, in our arts organizations, as well as the initiatives within your libraries, parks, active living centers. The arts add value to community pride, youth development, lifelong learning, civic engagement, mental health, and the celebration of cultural diversity. And beyond those necessities, it makes solid business sense, too. I would be really remiss if I didn't, uh, end with an invitation to you all to come out and check out these arts and culture activities. We have many, many coming up. Um, we have performances in the Davis Theater this month, including we're starting a discovery series where we're featuring local artists and pairing kind of really different groups to share a billing together. So people really do have that piece of, I'm coming out because I know this, but I get to be inspired by something different that I haven't seen before. Um, we've got our Family Day activities this month, which includes a fantastic puppet, puppet performance, uh, theater group coming down from Canada, uh, to perform that. So that's a wonderful activity that we've got coming up. And February 29th, we're, uh, working together with Mental Health America of the Central Carolinas, um, to present Art in Mind, which is a fundraising activity to raise awareness of the critical role the arts play in many community mental health initiatives and raising funding for that work at the same time. Um, so come out, check us out. I've got some brochures. I have a one-page summary of the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study here that I can share with you all. Um, I also have a 60-page deep dive for anyone that wants to go into it, um, in full order. So, thank you all, and I'm glad to answer any questions or hear your feedback.
Questions for Liz, commissioners. Uh, I will just say that I'm very happy to see the results of this survey. I am one of the people that was surveyed, uh, while attending a performance, uh, at the Davis Theater. Um, I find all of this to be true. I'm a season ticket holder for the series at the Davis Theater and, and the survey is exactly correct. That usually results in, uh, a meal in a restaurant prior to the performance. Uh, most of those performances, you need to get a reservation because most of the restaurants downtown are full on those evenings. And so seeing people out patronizing our local restaurants, um, shopping with any merchants that would be open at those hours, uh, the pedestrian traffic that you see up and down the sidewalk and folks coming here. And it's, um, a strong sense of community as well because there's a lot of interaction with folks once you get there. And I know that on a number of those performances, I've had occasion to, uh, to talk to a number of people that I did not recognize or know and ask, you know, what, what brings you here? Uh, and usually they're from neighboring counties, uh, that have come because they have a particularly liked the performer, uh, that's coming. And they too have been eating in our restaurants and shopping in our stores. And, and it's, it's, it's a, a very productive activity for our, our community. And I applaud you for the activities out in the other municipalities throughout the county. Um, and, and I hear a, a lot about sponsorship of concert series in Kannapolis and Harrisburg and, um, other places. So, so it's, it's great that that's being spread, spread around as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you for what you're doing.
A pleasure. A real pleasure.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, uh, exactly what you said. We've been to many of those shows as well. Um, and as the council is beginning to look at, uh, planning for the future and looking at their strategic plan, Ms. Fitzgerald and I have had a couple of conver, preliminary conversations. So their current lease runs out in two years and they're hoping, uh, as they plan for the future, that, that may come back even though it has not expired, but maybe amend that end date for an additional five to 10 years as well. So, stay tuned on that and we'll bring it back to you after we've had some more conversations and worked on the wording.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, and, and that, that was one thing I did not include in my comments. Um, it, we have the historic courthouse across the street, which I'm so thankful, uh, that there were a group of citizens that, that worked to make sure that was preserved. And to have a tenant, uh, that, that makes that available to the public. You know, I, I know you go to a lot of communities and they may have a historic courthouse or a building that's locked all the time.
Yep.
And so to have those activities going on and people coming and going and seeing it, not to mention, um, the Arts Council has made a significant investment, uh, in creating the Davis Theater upstairs in space that, that was not in great shape prior to that. Uh, the county's made significant contributions as well. So I, I view it as a great partnership. Uh, and it keeps that, that building alive and operating. And, uh, I think it's an important part with the new courthouse construction and the plaza area, uh, once the streetscape is completed, uh, by the city. Uh, I think that's really gonna be a hub of activity for, for the entire county.
Yeah. We really see ourselves and our role within that building as being, um, as being a gateway, as being a point of pride for the community. Our galleries are open five days a week. Um, we had, um, a whole crowd over on Saturday because we have lots of volunteers signing up. So, community members are really engaged in the work that we're doing at the Arts Council. Um, visitors really have an opportunity to drop in and find out about what's on the walls of the gallery, what's happening upstairs in the theater, but also really, um, we make an effort to really connect them to, um, the other, uh, creators who have businesses downtown and across the county and really helping to connect them in those spaces. And so, um, I am really grateful to the county for the gift that you keep giving us by allowing us to serve in that space. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Um, one of the things that I like about the Arts Council is what you do for the students and, uh, you know, the continuing education for them. And I've attended several of your Arts Council breakfasts, fundraisers, uh, but all the, the classes and all the different programs that the Arts Council offers benefits our students greatly. And we get a lot of bang for our buck for what we put into the Arts Council. So I appreciate that more than anything. Although the adult part is good, too. I don't do a lot of adult things in the evening, but a lot of people do, such as Steve and maybe Mike, some of the rest of us. But, but, uh, it's just a good facility and I'm glad that we've been able to support that.
Thank you. Thank you. Students take part in the arts is of course something that is a point of pride and really part of what attracted me to Cabarrus County and to lead this organization is because it's an incredible way of making sure that we're serving every student every year that they're in school, um, with a really rich opportunity. Um, and part of the initiatives that we've really undertaken and that has both been in our expansion of the grants that we've been able to give to other organizations and the work that we're doing as an arts council is taking that, that idea of how do you make sure that something is broadly available? And we, we're leading with art on the go and making sure that we have programming happening at the libraries in Midland, that we've got, uh, murals happening in Mount Pleasant, that we have, uh, the concerts that we're supporting in Kannapolis and Harrisburg. So that reach really matters and that, that matters to families, that matters to, uh, new singles and couples that are moving into town and wanting to find a way to connect in. Um, and we're proud to be a part of that work.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned, uh, breakfast for the arts. I think that is the largest gathering that occurs in, in Cabarrus County that I'm aware of. Seven to 800 people at some times.
We're expecting 800 people at Embassy Suites on May 1st, 8:00 AM.
Right. Yeah, and it's, it is a free breakfast and great entertainment. So encourage people to participate.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. We move now to item 3.3, uh, for, from the Cooperative Extension. They are end-of-the-year report and it looks like they have a, a, a large contingency of people. Welcome, Tracy Lacamp, Director.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having us. Yes, um, most of our staff is here with me today. You have a copy of the annual report in, um, your packet, but I also am giving you a physical copy so you can kinda look through that and see, uh, different things that are there. Wanted to showcase a few different things, but the main, um, point of all of this, thank you. Yeah, no, I was like, oh, um, the main point of all of it is that as part of our expectations from NC State and NC A&amp;T University, um, NC Cooperative Extension expects each county, um, to give a report, uh, a ro, report to the people about the things that we've been doing in extension and our impacts and, um, and talk a little bit about, you know, what you all might, uh, see as some, uh, needs in the community, but also to really give you an, uh, insight on what we've been doing lately. So, um, the annual report has lots of great stories that are in there. Uh, NC State requires us to, uh, give a lot of different reports at the end of the year. So there's some numbers in there that are fun. There's some data in there that's fun. There's some pictures in there that's fun. We're just gonna highlight a few of them really quickly. Um, I did wanna showcase our, we have two of our new staff members with us. So Danielle and Peyton, if you guys wanna come up here with me. Uh, Danielle and Peyton are our new hires for 2023, so I wanted to showcase them so you can see their lovely faces and, uh, welcome them to the crew. Uh, they both actually have quite some time under their belts. They were a little bit earlier in the year in 2023. Um, Danielle, will you tell us a little bit about your program and what 2023?
Tell us a little bit about what you've done so far in 2023. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Danielle Pennington. I'm the food and nutrition educator with Cabarrus County Cooperative Extension. Um, so this past year, I kinda dove right in, I'll be honest with you. Um, so before I was even quite complete with my training, I took on my first partnership, which was with Shady Brook Elementary in, uh, the Kannapolis area. So one of my target populations, I'm also fluent in Spanish. So one of our target populations was really engaging with the Hispanic community, um, which is, is very large in particularly the Kannapolis area, working with our F2A workers as well. Um, so dove right in in Shady Brook. I took on about, um, 200, 240 students as my first partnership. Um, they were lovely. Shady Brook Elementary was so welcoming and it made for an easy transition into my first partnership. Um, we're very strong. We're heavy with, um, food safety. Um, also just, um, connecting them with food and healthy food all around. Also, physical activity is a large component as well. And, um, I would say more with the adult population. So I should mention, I am 50% adult, 50% youth. So I do attract and I target both, you know, basically ranges, um, let's say ages from, uh, third grade up until the aging population as well. Um, but another, uh, fairly predominant, uh, topic or that I focus on is food resource management. Um, so also just combat food insecurity and that particularly with the adult sections. But kids are becoming wiser as I'm sure we're all aware of. Um, so that is a small component of that, but particularly with the adult group. Um, so after Shady Brook, I partnered with the Boys and Girls Club of Cabarrus County, which was an experience as well. Took on about 500 students with them over the summer, like two months. I mean, it was amazing. Um, the need in that population is, is evident. Um, working with students who don't even know what watermelon is, have never tasted watermelon, cantaloupes, um, squash and cucumbers. Um, and for me, growing up, um, I would say on a homestead, I grew up with my grandparents who were avid gardeners and, you know, uh, wanting to produce what they could. Um, it blew my mind that so many students were so far removed from, you know, local produce, um, which is especially here in North Carolina where it's in abundance, you know, pretty much all year round. Um, after Boys and Girls Club, I partnered again with Shady Brook. Currently I'm partnering with UNCC Student Pantry, um, where we also actually, it go in my second class was this past Friday with this partnership. And, um, there is a lot of need for food security as well as just awareness and, and food and nutrition education as well. Um, I'm reminded of when I was in school, I actually graduated from UNC Chapel Hill with pre-medicine, and it reminds me of how much I could have benefited from this role had I had a me. benefited from this role had I had a me when I was in college. And I make sure to express this with my participants, like, I've been there. I know what you're doing. I know you're eating ramen and, you know, just being unhealthy. So it's really nice to be able to tap into that college, you know, that young adult population, too, which are our future leaders of our, you know, our world. So I'm happy to be here. Thank y'all so much.
When we met with you all last year for the annual report, this position was vacant, and I really pushed to get a bilingual person in there, but also to serve in certain populations. We had met with Shadybrook, and as you know, there's a educational teaching kitchen that they just remodeled over there at Shadybrook, and they were struggling with trying to figure out how to incorporate that within the curriculum. And so we saw that as a void that we would be able to fill. And so when Danielle was able to come on, I was really excited to, that was our first target, like, get on there, get in going with Shadybrook. And they were excellent partners in that. So they both, everybody just kind of took it and ran with it because we knew that that was a need. And like you said, before she was even done with her training, really, it, let's go. So we got into Shadybrook and got that taken care of. So thank you for your work.
Could I add on to that?
Sure.
You drew something to my mind. So just to kind of underscore the need, especially in the Boys and Girls Club, which was during the summer, their life skills room, which is where they envisioned me doing the teaching classes, is where they have a prep kitchen. They said they were kind of, you know, a little facetious. They were like, good luck. You know, we can't get kids to even come in this room. With the junior age population grades, three through five or three through seven, whatever, however it works, they get to choose what room they go into. So it's not required that you go to this room for a certain amount of time. So I was like, you know, game on. So by the end of it, the kids were literally trying to sneak into my classroom. Even though it was full, they were directed to go somewhere else. They'd be sneaking in, trying to get in, you know, curious about what recipes we had and about what knowledge I was going to feed them today. So just wanted to add to that.
Yeah, that's great. So it's been a lot of really good partnerships that we've been able to rebuild and reboot a little bit since, prior to COVID, when we stopped doing some of those programmings. That was great. And Peyton came on as our new horticulture agent. So Peyton, you want to share a little bit about what 2023 meant for you?
2023 was an adventure. So I've had the opportunity to work both on the consumer and commercial side of horticulture. So I work a lot with our local farmers and our local growers here. They call me and say, hey, can you come scout for insects and pests, things like that? Or, hey, why aren't my pumpkins growing? Can you help me out? So that's been fun to help build that collaboration connection with them. Another thing that I got to do was host public programs for the county, and this is in regards to, we, I did a native pollinators and perennial program, which got a lot of interest from some of our local libraries. I also got to host a vegetable garden planning workshop, which the community has been really eager about, and it was really good turnout, a lot of really great questions. On the day-to-day, I get, you know, the questions of, okay, what, when do I grow? What do I grow? And there's a lot of interest for homeowners to start growing, which is always nice to hear. And I try to promote native plants when I can. Thanks.
So it's important for us to point out that both of these positions were vacant this time last year. And so both of these ladies came on and filled that shoe very quickly and ran with it. Peyton is now doing the, our first Extension Master Gardener class since 2019. So we're very excited about that. We have 25 students in the Extension Master Gardener class, which will increase our number of volunteers that will be able to give back to our community for the next year. That would be very exciting to boost that volunteer base up and reach even more people within our crew. So thank you, ladies. But we also have some other staff members that are with us, but wanted to run through some things that we've done throughout the year. We have a, we have two new hires that were hired early 2023 or even 2022, Jessica Klein and Molly Clayman. Jessica Klein's our volunteer coordinator and has done great work with coordinator volunteers, but also with our design and marketing. Molly Clayman has been our 4H agent. Many of you guys know that she works with the Youth Commission, but she also has done a great job of getting our 4H numbers to even higher than they were pre-COVID, which, if you know, that was my numbers back then, so she's beating my numbers now. So that's even, it's really exciting to see that that come to fruition. Beverly Bolenbecker is our coordinator for our 4H after-school program. She and Denise have been working with another partnership with getting the $35,000 grant to help them keep going and move forward with that. Pam Ooten is our family consumer science agent. You know her from Pam's Kitchen, but it would be very exciting to have Pam's Kitchen from our newly remodeled kitchen at the office. So I encourage you all to stop by and visit, check out our new kitchen. We are having that ribbon cutting ceremony on February 13th at, in the afternoon at 4:30. So if you want to stop by and join us for that, or, you know, it's open to the public eight to five, you're welcome to stop in anytime to come and check out our kitchen. Stacy Jones is our local researcher, who is, works with our nurseries and ornamentals, and she has been doing a lot of cool research. So you'll see in your packet that there's some research updates and some surveys that I worked with on our local pollinators and understanding our bee habitat surveys and different things that we've been doing here in the office. And then Christine keeps us all running in the front office as our administrative assistant. And this year, we also were able to partner with AARP and get a part-time support specialist in the front as well. So we've been able to build up our staff to be able to answer the call of all of our community members. We are still in the search for a agriculture livestock field crops agent. So we are still involved in that. We've got a lot of cool things going on. The biggest things that we are proud of for 2023 is that we were able to bring back a lot of longstanding events. So you saw that we were able to bring back the Agribusiness Days, where we bring the sixth graders out to the arena. We did that last year. It was a great success in the springtime. We're actually doing it at the end of February this year to work with the new timeline with the school schedule and a couple of different things to make it fall a little bit better in the ag community and a couple of different partners there. So we're doing it at the end of February this year out at the arena. Actually, we've got a great partnership, not only with the school systems, both KCS and CCS and all of our local smaller non-traditional schools, but also with a lot of our departments as well, working with all of that, working with the arena staff and everybody out there as well. We will be having the Spring Plant Herb Festival out of the arena as well. The Extension plant sale is currently going on now, and more about that here in a little bit. We have been working with the North Carolina State University Strategic Planning Committee, as well as the Cabarrus County Strategic Committee, to put all of that together and really serve and try to figure out what is the best things. And it's very interesting that the five big pieces that NC State or NC Cooperative Extension focuses on for their strategic plan very much correlate with the five things that Cabarrus County also asked for. So it's really easy to fill both of those buckets because we're, you know, not robbing from two different places. So we're very excited to build those programs up in response, and that's where our team has all been working together to continue to plan and build our programs based on those responses that came out of that. Our continued partners include the Cabarrus Arts Council, so we've met a few different times there, and they are our host for our 4H youth expressive arts contest. So our youth get to actually display in an official venue, which is really exciting. They let us have the talent show up top, and, you know, it makes for a great evening for the youth to feel like they are part of a big, one of those big fancy nights that people take people out for dinner for. And I'm sure they do go out for dinner for that. It might be a little bit different than, than some of us would do, but I think it's great. They, we have other partners that we have are, include the Farm Bureau, which are huge partnerships with us, and Carolina Farm Credit to continue us, supporting us financially. Cabarrus County Schools and the KCS, like I said, through many different partnerships, working with our 4H programs in the classroom, bringing the Kids Plus After School Program and supporting our after-school program. That way, we partner with Second Harvest, with TruCare Pharmacy, and then with all of our great departments, Active Living and Parks, the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office, working with our different programs out there. IAM is always, you know, one phone call away from the 52 different things that we ask them to do daily. So we're grateful to have that county partnership and all that we do there. So I'm happy to answer any questions or field anything about all the things that we do with Cooperative Extension, and look forward to seeing you again from the next year.
Questions for Tracy?
Can you touch on the number of volunteer hours and what that equates to for money that you highlighted at our last meeting?
Pam, do you have those numbers off the top of your head?
No.
It is a lot. And what we have is broken down by, by program area. So last year, in, that's the numbers that I can find very quickly. The ECA, which is one of our four volunteer programs, donated 23,265 hours in volunteer service. Our, I would, it's safe to assume, like, look at that, there's 1,000 master gardener hours. There's, I'm trying to look and see if there's a few other ones in here. Generally, it's around 50,000 hours a year that our volunteers amass throughout the year. They serve in all different aspects of it, and there's lots of fun data that goes with that, but I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. We will have them for all of our end-of-the-year celebrations that you guys will all get random invitations to, but I don't have the mass numbers, unfortunately, because they're very impressive. Thanks.
Okay, other questions or comments? Well, we, go ahead.
I was going to ask, you mentioned ribbon cutting for the new kitchen. When is that again?
February 13th.
At what time?
4:30. 4:00.
4:00.
At 4:30. That's why I bring them.
Okay.
4:30.
And so will you be cooking and serving food in that kitchen for the ribbon cutting? Just curious.
We are having a volunteer appreciation earlier that day from 11:00 to 1:00, where food will be served.
Okay.
The ribbon cutting ceremony will be relatively short and sweet because we have three events happening that evening in our building that we also have to be prepared for. So it will be relatively short, but there will also be food at those other events that are going on that day. So I'm sure if you guys want food, you just talk to me and we'll get to speaking.
That's, that's, that's good to know. And I'm glad you pointed out, I mean, you know, it's great for the public to know that the facility that they see out there on the corner of Warren Coleman Boulevard and Cabarrus Avenue is used quite a lot for a lot of different activities, probably more than most people realize.
I'm sure it's more than most people realize. We, we have three meeting spaces that happen in that room and, or in that building, and the three meeting spaces are only utilized by our associated groups. And just limiting to that associate, to those associated groups, the rooms are booked almost daily. And there's multiple times where we're splitting rooms and splitting places and trying to figure out how we can do what we do, because also in our building is Soil and Water Conservation District, so when they're having, and they're having their speaking event that night. And so, and we have our 4H clubs that meet in there, and our ECA clubs that meet in there, and the master gardeners that meet in there, and any of our associated groups that work with them as well. Many of our partners have programs that we partnered with them in those spaces. So there's lots of, lots of things happening at the Extension Office at any given day.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that report.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for having us.
Okay, we move now to discussion items for action. And first up is item 4.1 from Cabarrus County Schools. We're happy to have Jim Howden and I think Phil Penn to talk about repurposing funds.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I think if some of you may know, as a school district, we've been working pretty aggressively to reduce an anticipated deficit in our local fund to the tune of what it was initially about $5 million. Crested at about $7.4 million when everything rolled together. Through a number of actions that we took during the month of November into December, we've whittled that down pretty aggressively. But the item before you tonight that I really wanted to address, and this came out of a conversation I had with Mr. Howden, Mr. Harris back at the end of December, was very graciously, the county had given us $1.6 million or so one-time appropriations at the very end of the fiscal '23 year. And I felt it was a bit disingenuous to continue to spend down that money knowing that we had a deficit elsewhere. So we froze those funds back in November as part of the actions that we were taking. One of the questions I wanted to ask, and it's the purpose of me being here tonight, is that if we were permitted to use those funds, up to $800,000 of what's remaining, and there's about $831,000 remaining right now, it would serve to bring our anticipated deficit down to about the $550,000 level, as I sit here tonight. That still leaves work to do on our part, of course. There are other things that are taking place within the school district to try to reduce that number, but it would be, frankly, go a long way to helping us get back down to what I anticipate being a zero by the end of the year.
Okay, questions for Mr. Penn?
So this, the 1.6 million in one-time appropriations that we gave you, what, what projects did that include?
It was predominantly professional development, some curriculum purchases, and some technology purchases.
Okay. Like purchasing computers, I guess, was it for students or replacements?
Yeah, it was.
Okay. And you said that was allocated the end of?
Fiscal 2023. I think the, I think the actual funding came through in June, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So this is not related to the projects that we had discussed?
Not in any way.
Tennis courts, the?
No, not at all.
Fields, any of them?
Okay.
Other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Penn, I just wanted to ask you, at one time, you guys took from your fund balance monies to add to the teacher supplement. Does this have anything to do with that?
So me, money being taken from the fund balance to do that would have been prior to my getting here, obviously, right? I've only been here since July. What I could tell you with some certainty is that there's been an anticipated use of, an appropriation of fund balance in every budget that was part of Cabarrus County Schools since 2012. So every year, there's been an anticipated use of fund balance to balance out the local budget.
Yeah, and I can remember many years ago, because I, I know we've never officially met, but I did serve on the school board for 12 years.
Yes, sir.
And I remember there was a time, and county manager and I discussed this, and the chairman many times, of the school's fund balance, because there was a time back when, in the day, you might say, where it was substantial, 12, 15 million in the school board budget, I mean, fund balance. And so what you're saying now is this money will help you bring it down, and you'll probably not have a fund balance.
No, I want to be clear about what I'm saying. Right now, at the end of the '23 year, the school district had a fund balance of about $7.2 million. Now, in that fund balance, we have a board policy that says I need to maintain 8% of my, of my, of my budget in a fund balance, and I can't appropriate any of it unless it's above 12%. So the policy is only two very short sentences long. So right now, in effect, that money is trapped there by the policy. I cannot use it to address this issue.
Yeah, okay. I fully understand that, because we, as commissioners, have the same, the same policy. Ours, of course, is much more, you know, simply because of the responsibilities that we have, you might say.
Sure.
But if this will help you meet your goal for what you need to do, I'm certainly all right with it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Can, can you repeat that about what you mentioned about the fund balance?
Yeah. So at the end of the 2023 fiscal year, if you were to look at our financial statements and excluding the effect of the 1.6 million that came in right at the end of the fiscal year, which was one-time appropriation, our fund balance was around 7.2 or 7.3 million dollars.
Okay.
Rough numbers, 8% of the $90 million appropriation from the county for this current year is about 7.2 million. That's about where the fund balance sits right now.
That's what I was going to ask, what percentage?
Just real quick to clarify, so school systems in the state do not have a minimum fund balance requirement. There is no statutory minimum. We are considered their fund balance for all intents and purposes. They have adopted 8%. That's a local government commission recommendation for counties and cities in the state of North Carolina, but it does not apply to school systems. So they could change the Board of Education that policy anytime they want.
I can't, just to be clear.
Yes, the Board can.
And they can take that action anytime during the year. And they can take that action anytime during the year. It's not, you know, required certain time of the year. The Board action can change that.
That is correct. And in full transparency, I, I've planned to be on the policy committee agenda for the month of March with some suggested changes to that policy, having had multiple discussions with other CFOs around the state about whether or not they have a policy, if they do have a policy, how does it operate, my own past experiences in Connecticut with, with variations on how that policy should work. And frankly, after having some pretty robust conversations with Mr. Howden and Mr. Harris at the end of December around, around the policy, so.
And just for the, the benefit of the public, and, and you may have already stated this in your opening comments, the, the shortfall that, just, just a brief explanation of, of that, because I think that gets people's attention.
No, absolutely. And, and the biggest piece of it, and this is detailed in some, in some regard in the memo that was provided in your packet, was there is an anticipated fund balance appropriation of $5 million in the current fiscal year. The problem is you can't do it because of the policy that's in place. As you know, Cabarrus County Schools had a, had a fund balance of approximately $20 million about three years ago, sort of in the peak of the pand- pandemic, and then steadily worked that pa- fund balance down on a number of different projects and other things that they use to balance the operating budget in that year. But we're now, I'm now trapped in the policy that says that unless it's above 12%, I can't spend it, and the 8% has to sit there. So, i- if you think about being in the current year situation where I've got a $90 million appropriation and what effectively becomes $95 million worth of expenses, I've got to now figure out how I'm going to cover that with the lack of, with that revenue not being there. And that was the biggest piece of how we got to where we are.
Yeah, and I think it's important for people to understand, it's not like you got $5 million worth of bills laying on your desk and you can't pay them because you don't have the money.
Right.
Because you do have the money, but it's this self-imposed policy by previous school boards, I would assume.
Yes, sir, I believe the policy was passed in 2002.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the current school board did not establish this policy, so that, that's certainly something that they can reconsider, but it's not a dire situation like one might perceive if they just heard that there was a budget shortfall.
Yeah, and I, and I want to be transparent about that for the public. We're paying our bills, we're meeting payroll, we're doing all those things you should be doing, right? But this is something that keeps me awake at night, trying to make sure that I can get back to a balanced budget by the end of the year. And I have to say, thanks to my staff and, and others, like, within the leadership team, we've made a lot of good progress around that. To be at this point, sitting under a million dollars in anticipated deficit for this year compared to where we were, I feel good about the progress, but I still know there's work to be done.
So, now, why is there not a presentation to the school board this evening about changing their policy?
Well, as I said.
That would easily be done by just their action.
Yeah, and it, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm just saying, eas- by, by a simple vote of their board and change of policy, it could be proposed to them this evening.
And, and the way the board operates is you go through policy committee first, right? And, and I wanted to be thoughtful about this and solicit a lot of feedback from other districts along those lines, which is why I've said that I will be at the policy committee meeting in March to propose just that.
Right, but, but right now, you're, you're needing up to 800,000, so, I mean, it's kind of a priority instead of waiting until March, but, but I understand. I know you're just the messenger, so.
I did want to highlight, because that does speak to the, the bigger issue, which is, for all intents and purposes, the, the school system has a structural deficit that they have been using fund balance to address for the last decade plus. That's not sustainable, and when they get to a place which, even without the policy, eventually, they're going to run out of fund balance, which means there are going to have to be cuts or additional funding from a local level in order to make their budget balance moving forward. So, this will fall, fold into the FY '25 budget discussion that we have, because that deficit has to be filled some way or somehow, or they have to make adjustments to their budget.
Exactly right. I did not want to jump ahead to that, just knowing that that's a much bigger conversation, but that is 100% true.
Well, that, I think we, we've had some pretty extensive discussion or concerns in the past about recurring expenses being funded from that fund balance, knowing that eventually that would be depleted, and, and just, just as, as Mr. Harris just, just described. But as far as this current situation that we're talking about, I'm fine with that.
Appreciate that.
That repurposing of funds. Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate the support.
Okay, any other questions? All right.
Now, if you'll forgive me, I have another board meeting starting in 20 minutes, so I'll be heading in that direction.
Okay.
So, thank you so much for your time tonight.
Have fun.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we move now to item 4.2, and this is appointments to boards and committees. You all have a copy of those in your agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments about any of those items? If hearing none, we will move on to item 4.3, 2024 Commission Board Appointments Update, which mine just all of a sudden decided to get very small. On the tran- on the, um, planning, MPO, metro, yeah, yeah, so that, that was a change. There was, let's see, Commissioner Meesmer was on the MPO and stepped away, and then Commissioner Schu was the alternate, Commissioner Fur was the representative, and he has a conflict schedule-wise. Yeah, so I agreed to take that one for a, a period, if that's, yeah, and so, this makes that change for the board's approval. Okay, any questions or comments on that one? Okay, then we will move to item 4.4 from Cooperative Extension Budget Amendment for Plant Sale, and we welcome Tracy Lacamp back to the table.
Well, as promised, I said I'd be back to talk about the plant sale. We are currently in the spring plant sale, but we had another one in the fall, and we were very excited that it exceeded all of our expectations. I think we had budgeted originally $6,000 to cover both in and out, and we exceeded that, that was, we exceeded that in our fall plant sale, and that was our budget for both of them. So, I guess that's a really good problem to have. So, basically, the ask is to increase both the income and expense line item to $15,000 to cover both plant sales, so hopefully, that'll cover both ins and outs, knowing that our spring sale is usually 40% bigger than our fall plant sale, and our fall plant sale was bigger than we thought both of them would be. So, it's very exciting to have that problem. We are offering the biggest increase in that, and while we're seeing that increase, we believe that we added native pollinators to our, our sale this year, so we, you can, we're one of the only places around where you can actually buy native pollinator plants to put in your garden, so these are things like cone flower and echinacea and some fun spring blooming plants, and that, they are all very much correlated. I think we'd also talked about that a lot, that we have the pollinator garden that we put in a couple of years ago with support from the board, and that educationally, we use that a lot in our programs. So, we talk about all the native pollinator-friendly plants that are out there, and everybody's like, well, where do you buy them? And I said, well, funny enough, we actually have a plant sale that does that, and evidently, that strategy has worked very well. So, the ask is to increase that budget line item for both the expense and income, revenue balance for that, for the plant sale.
Very good. Any questions for Tracy on that item? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
And I think we're at about midpoint of our agenda, and so, I would propose that we take about a 15-minute break and reconvene at 5 until 6.
Okay, I think we're ready to resume the meeting and we will start with item 4.5, forestry sales at Stonewall Jackson property and Kelly Seifert has that item.
Thank you. As you all are aware, the state transferred two properties to Cabarrus County in June of last year as part of the disposition of the Jackson training facility. That equated to 268 acres. The state had a formally adopted forestry plan on the property. So in order to follow up on that and to clear the property for the public training facility, the commissioners approved an agreement with GFR to administer basically the forestry sale for us. The combination, it's going to be a combination of a complete harvest on the public training facility site and a selective thinning on the northern part above the communications tower. The bids for it, they have sent it out. We were kind of, the northern part will be based on market conditions. The market's not great right now, so we're looking for the best time to do that portion, but the southern portion we do have to proceed with. The bids are out right now. We're waiting for those to be received. I hope to have that information for you at the regular meeting so that you will know exactly how much the property, the timber will sell for. So I was just kind of setting this up for you so that at the regular meeting I will be able to bring that information. If not, then it will be the first meeting in March depending on when that information comes in. Are there any questions? Okay. In the related matter, to access a portion of the property, Lauren, can you bring up that map? There is a portion of the property that is only accessible to Highway 49, actually where the road frontage is. It is bisected from the rest of the property by the railroad. In order to obtain access to that, we are going to have to purchase, so this is the map of it, a temporary easement. We approached several property owners. You'll see at the very south portion of that line, there is a little red line coming out to 49. That is the preferred access. We are working to reach out to, well, we've talked to them already, but go back to them. They've told us to give them an offer, so we are working on the dollar value of that. Mr. Thrift has helped us with that and we're also checking to make sure what that portion of the harvest looks like to make sure that it is worth it, whatever we offer. So I hope to bring that as well at the next, at the regular meeting for you with a dollar amount on it. Any questions on that?
So is that, is that undeveloped property there?
It is. It is owned by the storage facility there. It goes all the way to that corner. That portion of the property is undeveloped. It is the preferred access because the other access is cross pavement and of course, none of those owners have responded to us either. But taking logging trucks across the pavement would probably do a lot of damage and probably would not be worth it for our forestry plan. So that is our preferred method to get that little section right there. It's about a two-week process to get that area harvested.
So how large is that piece of property that, that's kind of landlocked there?
I think it's about 40, well, the piece that's landlocked, um...
I guess where I'm going with it, would there be benefit to having permanent access to that property? Would, is that large enough for other uses?
Yes, it's probably 30 acres. I think that top, I can't remember for sure. That top portion, I think it's kind of swampy where you could theoretically go along behind that narrow section, but it's kind of swampy that way. There may be some benefit to a permanent access. I don't know whether those, that business would be interested in that, but if you are interested in that, we can have that conversation as well and see where that takes us. I think, you know, because there is no other access, that would probably be a good thing to do. It's virtually useless at this point because there's just nothing you can do with it. There's no good access.
I think it's worth exploration so we would know.
Well, one thing, one thing about it, we're not going to lose because it was given to us to start with. So we're not going to lose anything. And then timber's going to help cover a lot of the costs. But does it have, now, we do have to cross the railroad track. Is that right, Kelly?
That, well, the way that we're proposing it, we're trying to cross some of that blue triangle right there to get straight out onto 49. And probably that's one of the reasons we haven't talked too much about a permanent access because it is a limited access facility, but we might be able to get access on it so we can kind of go feel our way through that and see what our options are. I do think it's probably worth the effort just in case because otherwise we just have property that's...
Well, it looks like the little triangular piece might be, have some, difficult to develop as well, so it may be beneficial for both parties.
Yes, and it may be...
Yeah, I totally agree with the chairman. You know, we need to seek out a more permanent solution to, you know, to getting to the property.
Okay. I will look into it.
And just real quick for context, the, the top half is where the bulk of the public safety training facility would be. So it'd be north of the tracks there. And as Kelly said, that triangular piece, because of the access issues, is not envisioned as part of that master plan right now. It would just stay empty.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you. We're going to skip down to item 4.10 at this point from Department of Social Services, seniors health insurance information program, funding increase. And we're happy to have Tammy Baer with us for that item.
Evening. Hope everybody's well. Yes, this is about our seniors health insurance information program, funding increase, which we also know as SHIP is what we always call that. But we've just learned about the, the grant that we received in January. We received funding from the Department of Insurance, including the annual federal MIPA grant. And the MIPA is the Medicare Improvement for Patients and Providers Act. And that helps Medicaid beneficiaries learn about different resources to help them with Medicare costs. So we learned the exact amount in January, which is $6,878, which is slightly higher than a budget amount of $6,608. And of course, there's no county match for these funds.
Okay. Questions on that item? Okay. Thank you. Next up from finance, updated 2024 draw reimbursement resolutions and Jim Howden has that item.
Good evening, commissioners. As we gear up for the 2024 draw program financing this summer, the county's bond council has recommended that we update the verbiage on our reimbursement resolutions to be more specific in describing each of our projects. We're not adding any projects. We're not deleting any projects. We're not changing any dollar amounts. This is just cleaning up some of the verbiage. And because we do get to go back and include expenditures prior to this being approved, we would ask that the board suspend the rules tonight and vote on this if they're willing.
Okay. Questions on this item, commissioners? Okay, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to take action on this tonight. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And I would now entertain a motion to approve the updated reimbursement resolutions as presented. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, sir. Okay, next up from planning, 2024, 2025 community development programs. We're happy to have Robert Anderson with us for that item.
Good evening, commissioners. So annually, we come before the board to get permission to apply for the different programs, which are weatherization, HARP, and the housing and home improvement program, typically for the HARP and weatherization program and HHI. They give us a certain amount. We apply for that amount and typically we get it. The only one of these programs that does require a match is the housing and home improvement program, which is part of the larger home care community block grant, which is 10%. And that program specifically helps out with wheelchair ramps, grab bars, other minor home repairs, just to help keep, keep people in their homes. We are also requesting permission to apply for Duke and Blue Cross Blue Shield funds. Those are private grants and they do not require a county match. And lastly, we are requesting permission to apply for home funds this year. Currently, we've been in communication with Habitat for Humanity. If we are allowed to apply for funds this year, what we would like to do is partner with them to build a single-family affordable home here in Concord. If any of the funds are left over from that project, we would then take those funds and apply them to our down payment assistance program, which was funded through last year's home funds. This fund, or this grant does require a 25% match.
Okay. Questions, commissioners? All right. Thank you. And we move now to item 4.13 from the sheriff's office, acceptance of funds from the interlocal detention agreement with Anson County. Happy to have deputy chief Tessa Burchett and Sheriff Van Schaal for
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We come before you tonight, as, as previously stated, for the acceptance of these fees. Through an interlocal agreement, we are currently housing inmates from Anson County due to overcrowding. We have the space. This is commonly done between jails that have space available versus those that they don't, and it allows us to be reimbursed by Anson County at $70 a day per inmate. So it generates revenue as well, does not cause an increase of staff, does not diminish our capacity. It simply allows us to use some vacant space and generate revenue.
Great. Questions? How many counties do we have this agreement with? Other, there are others?
So Surrey County just ran up. They don't need the services anymore. Right now, we just have Stanley and Anson. And I was just told that Union County is going to be reaching out shortly because they're going to be building a new facility. Typically, we house females because that is how we can do this without increasing staff.
We, we've done this for a number of counties as far away as Beaufort County.
Really?
Just depending on the need. We've, we've assisted Union County before when they were having some mechanical problems at their jail. Like I said, it's very common. Rowan is another county that we've worked with in the past as well. So we have that luxury of having a fairly new facility and space, and it gives us that opportunity to offset detentions in our cost.
All right, great. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, we move to item 4.14, Acceptance of NC Legislative State Grant Bomb Squad Equipment.
Yes, I worked with our legislative delegation last year, and as you all know, we have a bomb squad that responds regionally. We service five counties, including Cabarrus, obviously. And this program was established over 20 years ago, and quite frankly, a lot of the equipment is aging out, or technology has rendered it obsolete. Appropriations by this board have helped us replace other equipment, but we still had about $300,000 worth of equipment. I felt like because we're a regional response team, that, that was an appropriate use of state funds, and so we got the allocation to cover the purchase. The items are listed in here to cover that purchase, so we would not be putting that in a budget for the coming years. So that's what we're going to utilize the money for, is to get that equipment up to date. And as you'll see, it's from everything, from bomb suits to technology, so, and all of it's very expensive. So we should be in good shape, equipment-wise, with new trucks, new, new equipment for a number of years. It'll outlast probably most of our service, you know, to county government, so hopefully another 20 years.
So if I understand you correct, that you're asking us to approve you spending all this money that's not going to cost us anything?
That is correct.
I like that proposal very much.
I think you're going to really like the next one, then.
Okay, well, then we'll move to 4.15, Acceptance of NC Legislative Grant Wellness Program and Bomb Squad Equipment.
One of, one of the things that came out of working on a mental health committee with Dr. Baker, Representative Baker, for law enforcement, was an opportunity to create a wellness program for the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office employees. And this included a unique program that's currently within about 18 sheriff's offices and police departments in North Carolina. And it involves an embedded behavioral health clinician that meets with employees, meets employees where they work, ride along with them, work the detention center with them, and provide counseling service to address things such as, you know, exposure to trauma, you know, suicide prevention, all of those types of things that tend to accumulate on an officer and employees over the years. I, I met the owner of this company with Representative Baker. We had a long conversation. I again put a proposal together and, and reached out to the legislative, our legislative delegation. The plan is for a five-year program that would put an embedded clinician for four days a week within the sheriff's office, working with every department, provide counseling to employees as they need it. Even, it even includes their, their spouse and family members if they have an event that impacts them. You know, we see a lot of deaths related to, you know, car crashes, violent crime, those types of things. So you'll remember the, the loss of three lives in Midland recently in an automobile wreck, which involved a small child, and that has its impact. It's being done very successfully. The proposal also included having a position that's detailed in there to be a wellness coordinator, to not only address the, the behavioral health wellness, the mental health wellness of our employees, but also the physical fitness wellness with getting towards a goal of increasing physical fitness. Both mental health and physical health can impact things like our health insurance program, you know, our attendance at work, those types of things, which we hope that, that will bear out. One of the, the things that is going to be exceptional about this program is that the, the company responder support services has been approached by UNC to do a study of embedded clinician programs, mental health programs, wellness programs, within a law enforcement agency, and its impact on time away from work, FMLA, those types of things for things associated with work and trauma at work. So at, at the end of, of three years of this five-year program, we'll actually have data to look at, and the program's being done for the introduction to other law enforcement agencies and, and emergency responders across the board. So it covers everything. It covers the vehicle, the salary, everything of that position, as well as the contract. One of the things that, that happened, we actually got extra funding. We got almost $1.4 million for this five-year program, and we will be able to extend this program to our county EMS as well. So they'll get a day with a clinician as well that will be serviced in the same way. So we're trying to incorporate them into this. We've met with them. They're excited about it and want to participate in it. So that's what we propose, to accept this money so we can utilize it for this wellness program and really do what we feel like will be significant, good work for some of our employees because we know we have employees that are struggling. And to have someone there every day that's beside you and talking with you, and it's as simple as going up to an office to have an appointment, that doesn't necessarily have to be so structured or through other programs. This, this clinician, we had an opportunity to talk with one of the potential candidates. All their candidates come from first responder background. They have some relation to being law enforcement, being fire, being EMS, that type of thing. And they're licensed professional clinicians that are doing this work. So we're, we're super excited about that.
You were correct. This one really is exciting.
Well, I do want to publicly say, you know, a thank you to Senator Paul Newton, Representative Baker, and Representative Crutchfield because they worked very hard to secure this funding and focused on law enforcement and our needs and supported this. You know, mental health wellness is something that, that was brought out in Senate Bill 300 back in '22, as well as physical fitness, and we're trying to get ahead of that curve where there may be mandatory physical fitness standards for law enforcement coming down the pipe. So we feel like this is setting us up for success down the road, and will help with retention and so many things. So that's, that's where we're coming from.
Great. Questions?
Just a comment. Sheriff, I wanted to thank you for your vision and for moving forward on a project that's going to benefit your people and other people in the community as they need it. But this is a, these last two items here are perfect examples of how important it is to have people in Raleigh that will lobby on behalf of Cabarrus County and our needs. And we've been able to put good people in Raleigh and hope that we can continue to do that because they help us get things done that we can't do locally, but they got a bigger pocket than we do. And so when there's funds available and they're lobbying for us and you, you are reaching out to them, that, that's, to me, is good business. It makes good business sense because we're making good use of taxpayer money. I thank you for all you do, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Tremendous asset to Cabarrus County.
Any other comments? Well, I certainly echo what Commissioner Shue has said, and I mean, not, not only for, for you folks, for, for participating in these programs and having those discussions. And I certainly agree with our delegation of the General Assembly has done a tremendous job of bringing funds back to Cabarrus County and working with folks like yourself to, to create these programs. And every law enforcement officer, first responder will benefit from this, and, and our taxpayers will, will benefit from the services that they receive and the fact that, that these state-funded programs are going to improve what we have here in Cabarrus County. Yeah, so thank you to you and to them as well.
Thank you. I appreciate the board's support. Thank you very much.
Okay. So we now are going to move back up to item 4.7. I skipped over a couple there, and that will be Resolution Authorizing County Manager to Execute Routine Easement Requests. And Kelly Sifford has that item.
Thank you. This item was drafted by Mr. Cook in order to allow you to authorize staff to go ahead with, there's a lot of easements associated with the new construction that we do between the schools, the recent one with the ITS and the Infrastructure and Asset Management Offices. There's work that we do, sewer lines, things like that, that we have to do, the easements associated with it, to give it to the cities, the courthouse, some of those things. We were looking to get a resolution to authorize the county manager to execute any ones associated with projects like that where it's a given that we're going to have to provide those easements as part of our development process and kind of take that off your plate as a regular routine item that you would have to see.
I think that sounds like an excellent idea. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Great, thank you. Okay, next up, land acquisition. Rodney and Kelly.
So this one is to get formal approval for three transactions that we have recently talked about. The first is the acquisition of property off of Zion Church Road for a future animal shelter and household hazardous waste facility. The second is off of Robinson Church Road for a future elementary school. And then the last is multiple parcels for a future park facility off of Davidson Road, which technically falls into the Davidson. And so this would authorize those three purchases. You can see the purchase prices for those transactions, and we can take any questions if you have them.
And these are all transactions that we've discussed at previous work sessions.
Yes, I would like to put one clarification in. As we have looked more at the property on Zion Church Road, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to fit anything besides the animal shelter, just for clarity's sake. We, we looked at possibly trying to squeeze in the hazardous waste with it, but I'm not sure based on the most recent things that we'll be able to squeeze that as well, but we will if we can.
Yeah. Okay, questions on that item? All right, thank you. Next up is item 4.9, Restructure Department of Social Services Legal Services. And that is Rodney and Elise. I don't think Elise is with us.
So I'm going to take the lead on this one on behalf of the department. So as you know, legal services have been provided through a contract with Hartzell and Williams for several years. Last summer, we were approached by department leadership to discuss the possibility of bringing those services back in-house. We have continued those conversations in the last few months, and we're here before you today because we have a consensus among department leadership, including our interim director and deputy directors, that bringing this back in-house is the appropriate decision for the county at this time. So the agenda item would create four staff positions, a lead human services attorney, a human services attorney, and then two paralegals. And we would obviously work with Hartzell and Williams on a transition plan over the next few months. The contract currently expires on June 30th, and we have ample funds, we believe, in next year's budget to cover the full cost of these positions without any need for additional resources. And that about sums it up, and I will take any questions.
Okay, Commissioners, questions on that item?
So this, this will be creating four new positions. I heard that correctly. Okay, and now what are we currently paying with the contract that we have with?
It has ranged annually from, I think, $480,000 last year, and then it was a little over $500,000 the year before.
Okay, and so the way this proposal of bringing this in-house, what's the cost projections for that?
We believe it will be less than what we are currently paying to get full-time support.
Okay, substantially less, or are we?
Not substantially.
So?
But we would be getting full-time support rather than.
Okay, so that's what I was going to ask. So what we currently have, excuse me, with the contract with Hartzell and Williams, do we have two attorneys that's handling it? What, how is that structured?
We do not have any fully dedicated staff to county business.
But the contract is with them to provide that, is that correct?
To provide legal support as needed by the county.
And you're saying that we're not getting that?
That is not what I'm saying.
Okay, well, can you repeat what you said then?
We believe we can get better support with full-time legal staff that are fully dedicated to county business.
Okay, you said we will receive better support?
The department will receive better support, receiving full-time legal advice, counsel, training.
Right.
Full-time.
Because I, I was here the first time whenever it was in-house, and then we decided to do a contract. And so, so where did the change? You said the department, I guess, folks within the department had approached you guys and said that they feel it should be in-house, and what were some of the reasonings?
I think greater access and availability, to have folks there onsite full-time was an important factor. Control, obviously, we have more control over county employees than we do contractors. And then obviously, cost is always a consideration.
So we think we can do this with four people?
Yes, based on the billable hours that we have had over the last few years.
Rodney, will this be located at the Human Services Building, or is this going to be located?
It will be, yes. So it'll be at the current facility until the new facility comes online.
And there is sufficient space without having to renovate or remodel or anything like that?
There is.
Okay, additional questions or comments? All right, hearing none. We will move to the next item, which is item 4.16 from Solid Waste, Budget Amendment for Bobcat Skidsteer Purchase. Welcome, Kevin Grant. We haven't seen you in a while.
Good to see everybody. Good evening. I'm presenting a budget amendment tonight to transfer $50,600 from the white goods fund balance to the landfill operating expense account. This money in the white good fund balance comes from the state. They get the money, so when you purchase a refrigerator or a hot water tank, an oven, washer-dryer, you're paying a $3 disposal tax. That tax goes to the state. They redistribute that money back to the county on a per capita basis. And so we get that money, and we're actually mandated to make sure that we spend X amount of dollars and keep it percent below this threshold amount. Otherwise, they will suspend the quarterly distribution to us. So they want us to use the money, and it's used explicitly to manage white goods. So this Bobcat Skidsteer will be located at the landfill to basically move scrap metal that we receive at the landfill mistakenly, or to manage what the appliances that we receive and to place in a container, so we send it to the scrap metal recycler.
Okay, questions on that item? Okay, questions on that item? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 4.17, Tax Administration Advertisement of 2023 Delinquent Taxes. Welcome, David Thrit.
Good evening, Commissioners. So for this item, North Carolina General Statute 105369 requires the county tax collector to report the amount of unpaid taxes that are outstanding and are to be liens on real property. So this is outstanding real estate property taxes for 2023. Current outstanding is $8,697,288.45. From that, we reduce those funds that are involved in bankruptcies of $171,134.32. We remove anything that's currently under appeal at the Property Tax Commission, which is $97,244.82, leaving us a total to report of $8,428,909.31. Our second point in this statute would be to request that the board orders the advertisement of these liens in the local newspaper. And we'd like you to set that advertisement date for March 24th, 2024. So the reason to report this now and ask for an advertisement date so far in advance is to give us time to notify each of these taxpayers, give them an opportunity to pay these balances prior to any advertisement takes place.
So what's their deadline to pay it to not be advertised in the newspaper? If we approve this?
Sure, so it would be likely that week before that. So probably the, we'll publish an actual date. As I recall, it's typically the Wednesday before that advertisement.
That's pretty, pretty good. Yeah.
So they've got, and we will send, we'll send an actual notice to each of these taxpayers at their last known address.
Right.
Formal notifications will happen.
Okay. So I was pretty intrigued by the very long list. I think it's well over 100 pages. How, once you send notices out to that, how much will that shrink down? Because some people may have just misplaced some paperwork.
Sure, so at this point, it is, you know, January 5th was the last day to pay.
Right.
And so it is still early in this process. We will collect a lot of those taxes prior to advertisement. Our typical advertising pages in the newspaper is about six to seven pages. We have quite a bit, but the dollar amount will significantly come down before that advertisement.
I just noticed how long the list was. I seen there was Popeye's Chicken, Chick-fil-A.
Quite a few big names on that at this point. That would certainly be different by the time we get there.
Right, okay.
For a number of reasons.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is approval of the regular meeting agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. Do not see anything, any action that we've taken tonight that would change that. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda and schedule the needed public hearing as presented. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do have need of a closed session tonight for the discussion of pending litigation and acquisition of real property. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 and 5. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. And we are now in closed session. And we thank everyone in our online audience for joining us. And we will be back for our regular meeting in two weeks on February 19th.